I'd like to call the word of the October 9th, 2025 meeting, Mayor Council. I'd like to call on Ambassador Deborah Rodman, Word of another voice is on the leash, Bishop Henry Williams, the lead of prayer, followed by a pledge, please remain standing.
I want just to evoke the presence of the Lord in this place tonight. Because where the presence of the Lord is, there is liberty and there is peace. So let's just bow our heads. Almighty God, we give you thanks and praise for all of your mighty works. You are so loving, God, you're kind, you're good, and you're gracious. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to the existence in this community with other people. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our elected officials, the businesses, the churches, the families. We thank you for our school and our school system. We thank you for our board members, our superintendents, and all that are involved in our community. And every individual that make up our city to be such a great city. But Lord, we acknowledge you that we do not deserve these good gift gifts. We are not worthy of your favor. For we have sinned against you in thought, word, and deed. We do things that we should not do, and we don't do the things that we should do. We have not loved you with our whole heart, and we have not loved our neighbor as ourselves. We appeal to you tonight, the Lamb of God, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins. Forgive us and give us hearts of obedience to the Holy Scripture. Thank you that Jesus rose from the dead and now reigns as King over heaven and earth. Grant that our sister city will be known as a righteous city. A city that confesses Jesus as Lord. A city of peace and hope. A city with happy homes. A city that welcomes the strangers. A city that cares for the needy. A city that defends the innocent from evil doers. Lord, we thank you for civil government. Those who bear the sword do so as ministers to be the terror to crime. I pray that our civil service would acknowledge this calling and perform it faithfully. Be our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement. Grant that they should never neglect to abuse their authority, but they should stand firm for truth and justice. Keep them safe from all hurt, harm, or dangers as they serve our community. I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in the sight, in your sight, God, for our benefits and for the glory. And we do ask these things in the name of the Father, and in the name of the Son, and the name of the Holy Spirit. And we say it is so, and so shall it be, in Jesus' name, amen.
Welcome to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Deborah Rodman, I was wondering. Our council set a time to review the minutes from the August 21st, 2025 regular meeting and the August 28th, 2025 official call meeting. Councilors, are any additions or deletions at this time? Seeing none, both are approved by acclamation. The minutes starting September 11th, 2025, and September 25th, 2025, regular council meeting, are still before the counting. Leading citizens, if you heard, worship the meeting. You have to actually come forward and state your name and address, so if they have it to the record, I'm sure it requires that you state an agreement, so that all have time to be heard. Please correct all comments. The council as a whole does not intend to abuse the individual members in debate. This is council policy, if all approve of you and your concern. Initially, here comes the important part. Yes, that is true, we simply want to address the council on the single item designated spokesperson to represent the group and their confidence. Again, just want to ensure the others have time to be heard, and having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Hello, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Christine Chica. I reside at 104 East Mary Street. I come here specifically to thank a certain group, and I wanted to recognize the Valdosta Police Department and the Fire Department, our first responders. I come up here because I'm thinking about how they, in light of all the things that have happened in the city of Valdosta lately, all this turmoil and scary things that have really affected us as citizens. From store robberies at gunpoint to promptly apprehending a suspect, from catching a student today, bringing a gun to school, for keeping students safe at SL Mason in the face of uncertain danger, and of course, responding to the tragic scene of baby Camer Jones, which I'm sure they are investigating diligently, keeping citizens informed, and will be transparent as to the details in all the things that have happened. And to always be in present in the community, rather be online through their Facebook page or in person out and about and willing to engage with citizens and keeping us informed. I just wanted to thank them for all the hard work they did. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Good evening. I am Carla Urban. I reside at 3132 Vanel Drive, but I'm currently employed with Coastal Plane. I just wanted to share some information, want to be more intentional about sharing with you guys about who we are and what we do. We are their local community action agency. We provide services to low-income households, the households just need a little bit of help. We have three major programs, and I pass handout information to tell you about those programs. Most people know about Head Start, where we prepare the three- and four-year-olds for kindergarten. We also have a weatherization program, where we help to make homes more energy efficient for families. And then I am the director of our CSVG Community Service Block Grant Program, where we provide a lot of services, including preventing evictions, we provide food vouchers, we provide rental assistance. Our biggest program is LIHE, where we provide light bill and gas bill assistance during heating months. And so just our fiscal year is from October 1st, and we just started our new year to September 30th. So I wanted to share with you guys some of our totals. We serve 10 counties. Lount County is our largest county. In the first page is just impact information, where this past fiscal year, we served 6,218 households through our LIHE program, where we were able to bring $2,791,499 back, funding back to our communities. Lount County's impact, of that 6,000, 1,231 residents were of Lount County, and that was over half a million dollars through that program. We also spent more than $40,000 on rental assistance to prevent evictions and homelessness. That also included some deposits to put families in homes, as well as some hotel stays to assist some of those families. And then we had $29,000. We've seen this year a larger increase, where LIHE didn't cover, some of the light bills were so high that the award amount for light did not cover. And so this year, we had spent additional funding, almost $30,000 for utility support in our area. We did more than $8,000 in food vouchers, and those were primarily seniors, 65 and older. We helped with two minor car repairs, one prescription eyeglass, and then one employment assistance. Thank you.
Good evening. How are you doing? I have something prepared, but I think I'm just going to speak off the cuff tonight. My name is Katie Watson. You see my address? Address? Please. 204... No, not my address. 1207 Lakeview Drive. Okay, so my name is Katie, and I own Shea Wood, and I was in the building that fell on 204 South Ashland Street the morning of the hurricane, Helena. That was probably the worst day of my life. You know, I poured my heart into getting that building ready, and we did great business in there for over four years. And fortunately, we are still doing great business, we just changed locations. But you know, there's been some things that have happened through this demolition process that, you know, I would just like to say that, you know, all notices of, you know, things about, I'm sorry, all notices of court pages, we'll say, were sent to the vacant lot address and returned to sender to the city of Valdosta. We received those envelopes back from the post office, and they have conveyed issues with correcting our forwarding address. They're still working on it. But I did call the city manager's office the morning that we got the condemnation bulletin was posted on the building, and I gave them our home address, is where we receive all of our mail. But we, you know, something has happened, and I feel like we've been kept out of the loop with no communication. I mean, we, you know, the city allowed us to permit our demolition crew, which we hired, and we were, we are, as of this week, we were 80% to 90% finished with our demolition. The crew said that the building would be on the ground by next Friday, but the city marshal came and imposed an obstruction. Sorry, an obstruction for us, and we had to, we had to stop all work. This afternoon, I saw that they are selling our building materials on Facebook, which is very upsetting, because those are historical items, and, you know, and they're ours, and they're being sold by the contractor that he, you know, hired by the city, and he said it was a, they were in a hurry to get rid of everything, so just to come and get it, somebody called. I just want to say, we did a new segment on Fox 5 Atlanta, as well as WCTV. And I just have, just really just... Okay. Well, I just want to say, I love the city, okay? And I hate that we are not in there. Thank you, I very much appreciate it.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
My name is Pastor Darren Neal, 1587 Bay 3 Road. I came tonight to say I'm extremely disappointed in the history of Valdosta, Georgia. Two officials were placed and put in place. One, because he is a great leader, the city's first African-American city manager. And second, a Latino female who has great, 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 great potential to even go higher than she has, and does great work. The two of them are Richard Hardy and Catherine Ammons. Ammons. And here it is now, when the city needs them the most, when they've done some of the greatest work. I feel they're being forced out of their positions. What was announced was that they voluntarily retired or want to resign. But I followed this situation with them for quite some time, and I think the city needs to reevaluate its position. This city, as we see it, is sinking. In 2020, I stood before the school board, and right where we are is where we are. I have members, city constituents, that called me and say, "You told us, but we didn't listen." We built a high school. We cared more about putting $86 million into the building of a school than we did about taking care of citizens that are dealing with poverty. Had we taken that money and placed it where it should have gone, we may not even have a student who just today bought in a weapon to school. They had a clip that would have allowed that student to fire off automatic rounds, and just the day prior, it was a threat that there would be a shootout at school. The city's sinking. We went from 4% in taxes in 2024 to now over 8% here in 2025. We have a city manager, an assistant city manager, that looked at this city. They did not look at it as black. They did not look at it as white. They saw the city, and they saw where things were falling apart. And they said, "We're going to take the effort to go against the powers that be. We're going to go against the families that run this city, and we're going to place the money and place the work where it needs to be." For over 40 years, Pin Oak has flooded. I want you who listen to my voice tonight on a rainy day to go over to Pin Oak when it rains. There's over two feet of water in city of Valdosta signs everywhere, and yet, Ms. Hazel comes here religiously and asks for somebody to do something, and only one person did, and that was Richard Hardy. I want to commend him, and I want to commend Catherine Ammons for doing the best they can. But I understand what it means when you have people that are working against you when you're working for the good. I want us to be careful and be mindful of the fact that God is coming back looking for people who have clear and clean hearts. Not white people, nor black people, except the people who love other people. May God bless you.
George Foster Ryan, 5004 Oak Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. I want to thank the first responders and all educators, including law enforcement. With the incident at SL Mason, I'm held in a professional way, as far as I'm aware. It could have been worse, and I just want to commend the people, the professionals here in Valdosta for that. That's a plus for us. That's a plus for professionalism, and that's what we all are looking for. And we're looking for truth. And I, as a member of the social media free press, was called concerning that matter as recently as yesterday afternoon. And family members gave me a little more information than I had obtained about the death of that young man. And I just want to leave this with you all. I'll probably be assisting the family in trying to get the word out that in the black community, often the parents and mothers, they don't understand if there's help available. From what I understand, that young man had had some problems for two weeks. He had even called for assistance, according to what I gather from a close relative. I'm not calling the name, because I don't know what the legal step they may want to take. But I just want to say that. I went to a facility here and tried to talk to the director to try to get somebody maybe to get on camera with me or to news media, and that people know if there's services available for counseling, they have problem people, children with mental or sicknesses, that somebody could come to their aid. Someone had, he called that young man. I understand. They called for help, and help didn't come. And it was along the lines of emergencies. And then I'm not talking about the day that it happened. I'm talking about before then. I don't know whether it's true or not, that's why I'm not mentioning no names. But if the news media in our community do not pick up and interview that family to get information, if any can get out to make it better for any other child, you can rest assured that what I do will be done, so everybody can get the information out. So if anything else happened like that, if somebody needs some services, and if it's available, they may know where to get it from. That's my goal. Thank you very much, Mayor Council.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time?
Hello, I am Marley Namaro. I also work with Coastal Plane. I am the coordinator for Lount County. And it was a couple of things that Carla didn't get a chance to share. One thing is, the former Dashar High School has been completely remodeled, and we are inviting everyone to the facility on tomorrow. It is Georgia Ramble Tour. It's tomorrow from 11:00 to 5:00, and the address is 900 South Troop Street. You'll get an opportunity to see exactly where all that money went into to restore that building. Also, we will be, we will also, on Saturday, October 18th, we're doing a community diaper giveaway, and that is one of the programs that we're doing through Coastal Plane. We will be giving out, I think it is a total of 40,000 pampers and 400 packets of wipes. So if you know anybody, share the good news. It's free. It's one of those things where we'll be giving away two packs of diapers and one pack of wipes per fam, per family. But we have to also remember that the supply is limited. Did I give you all all my information? It's from you. Now, tomorrow is 11:00 to 5:00. That is going to be October 18th. It's also in those packets.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, we'll close out this portion of the evening. We move on to council comments. Council allow all reading on that. I mentioned the Georgia Trust Fall Ramble. It begins tomorrow. It is only in two locations. They have a spread in Fall Ramble. There are 537 facilities in the state of Georgia, so we are lucky. It has not been here since 1989. We welcome the back. We've been sitting 61 historic sites, and none more historic than the old Dashar School, built in 1928. So welcome them to town. Be great hosts. Host this, be friendly. How y'all? Who do all that? It's like, you know, Friday, Saturday, and then open equipment on Sunday, and there's lots of activities surrounding that. So our downtown is going to be absolutely alive. We have our fantastic, Major's Market, and we moved it over to Unity Park, so that they can have the courthouse and everything that surrounds it, because there's also an antique car show all around courthouse. If you want to kick off the weekend, you also have Music in the Art Park down at the Turner Center, free music from 7:00 to 9:00. They have a food vendor that we turned it down there, that you can just pop your chair and watch music. So our downtown is going to be absolutely on fire, just to get the opium versus other than some council. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I really kind of had hoped both Richard and Catherine would have been here tonight, granted, it would have been both their last meeting with city council. But I'll say it out of the group, what I wanted to say personally, and that is, these were two individuals that had a lot of integrity and honor. They were both council professionals and worked extremely hard at the city and our citizens. And I would not live apart without our sincere thank you for all their efforts and how much we appreciate it.
For that, we do applaud. Are there any other council comments at this time?
Yes, thank you, definitely. I echo that from the council. Thank you for that. Yeah, this week, coming up after the record, that's some big stuff we got going on. Next week, we're also hosting a lot of state senators, representatives in town, Valdosta Tourism, trying to show folks where we are, the city to come to and visit. And so we're going to have a lot of folks in town coming up, really excited about that. So the city has a lot of things to be excited about. We got a lot of projects, and, you know, so we're going to keep this thing going. Definitely going to keep this going. We need your support. These guys show up. Well, I said that all the time, I love to see when these girls are feeling, and we need this. And all the folks that are watching on Facebook, we need your participation. We represent you, and if we don't see you, if we don't hear you, you know, how can we make changes for you? So please, please continue to come and support. Thank you.
As I say, the council's standing, applauding. We got the four hours, and I think we should stand at this council and say thank you to everyone listening.
The council, we are asking citizens in this fair community, because of the fact is, there have been a lot of questions and a lot of talk going on with the city. There's a lot happening. We are, in my opinion, in what I see, doing the best that we can do, and we are trying to be transparent with our citizens. Nothing that we're trying to hide or do anything wrong. And I say this because I have had several, several questions about a lot of things going on. I haven't had all the answers for the council forum. One of the big questions that has been coming to me is asking us about the, where is the city, or how are we handling this, and what are we doing? And I want to be transparent with one main question. We were talking about city manager, and you just want to be the city manager. And I just want to make this little part from Chalk Chalk, and it says that when there shall be a vacancy in the office of city manager, the duties and functions of city manager shall be discharged by mayor and council. Okay? With that being, and for transparency at this point, the council can't just say, make all, you know, be right, make all decisions. The council can't, the whole council and mayor can't sign. So what we do, we will really get a designated person for it, and basically, whether it is a council, I think, yeah, this we decide on a designated person to do that. So we're not trying to say that there's a takeover or whatever, the council's not doing their job or anything. What we're doing is we're going to follow the charter, and the charter, Jeff Rancure states that. And I do want you to know, just because things are being kind of said and done a lot of times, it's a list of, how should I say, reception. But just because things, you know, the council, not American change, this charter, we got one special process, it has to go through the state. That is not happening. To let you know, we're not having someone trying to take over or do, and I'm going to ask with you, there has been in the paper, I'm just going to say that, because that's very common, that the mayor is being the new city manager. There should be some clarity on that, so everybody will know how that is, or what that is to me. I wish our mayor could kind of like maybe tell them how. It's not that he's going to be the city manager annually. I know it seems like it could be very confusing. So all the questions coming to me and to others, I'm sure y'all get the questions as well. We do want them to be transparent. We're not hiding anything. We're trying to follow the process, what it is. So it's not like it's the mayor's just taking the, or being, making the decision. From a brief, very brief conversation within me and his shooters, anything that he do, any duties, anything he perform as the city manager, that he will consult with the council. So it's not like it's going to be done without everybody who are here, and he is...
They have given me the honor of working my full tail off, and we call out at 2:30 in the morning, but absolutely, I consult with this very one. It's being the smart people on my left and my right. That's the only way we move. The way we're moving together.
And he has to believe that, yes, he will let us know, he can do it, too. Before that, he needs to. So just want to let you know that. It's not that he's taking over here now.
You guys are awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.